All right, it's 6:30. Let's call this meeting to order. If everyone would stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have to sit down. So first on the agenda this evening, counsel is going to go into a closed session pursuant to general statute section 143-318.11 to speak with our attorney regarding purchasing some property. So we will leave and go into the other room and we'll be back. I'll motion to enter the closed session.
I have one last word. Yeah?
Okay, Council has their agenda. Are there any changes or a motion that we approve?
Jay. Can I make some additions and deletions to the consent agenda? And then is that it actually rolls in to the regular agenda? Is that on the consent agenda? On B? I'd like to put that as E. The set of public hearing is that I'd like to have a discussion on the making Mills River and then we'll set a public hearing. And then on C? Is that I'd like to cancel that for the time being. The public hearing. And then under the consent agenda, I'd like to add to cancel the July 8th meeting. Please.
Can cancel?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Is there a motion to approve with the changes?
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes.
I was in favor. Hi. Are there any announcements this evening? Nope, nope. Okay. So to public comment, first on public comment is Stan Ducker. If you'll step to the podium, sir, and announce your name for the minutes. You want to read? Okay.
Hi, I'm Stan Ducker. My home is at Mill River. I've been over this dinosaur in Mill River. I've been running around the back. That's how, that's how I'm living. I spent my career working at Lewis Community College for 32 plus years, retired 10 years. Went back to work recently, but so, and I kind of got out of Stanford. I'm not going to say I'm not. 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 I'm not going to say I'm not.
Okay. Council has their agenda. Are there any changes or a motion that we approve?
Jay. Can I make some additions and deletions to the consent agenda? And then is that it actually rolls in to the regular agenda? Is that on the consent agenda? On B? I'd like to put that as E. The set of public hearing is that I'd like to have a discussion on the making Mills River and then we'll set a public hearing. And then on C? Is that I'd like to cancel that for the time being. The public hearing. And then under the consent agenda, I'd like to add to cancel the July 8th meeting. Please.
Can cancel?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Is there a motion to approve with the changes?
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes.
I was in favor. Hi. Are there any announcements this evening? Nope, nope. Okay. So to public comment, first on public comment is Stan Ducker. If you'll step to the podium, sir, and announce your name for the minutes. You want to read? Okay.
Hi, I'm Stan Ducker. My home is at Mill River. I've been over this dinosaur in Mill River. I've been running around the back. That's how, that's how I'm living. I spent my career working at Lewis Community College for 32 plus years, retired 10 years. Went back to work recently, but so, and I kind of got out of Stanford. I'm not going to say I'm not. 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 So, and I kind of got out of step with what was going on in Mills River. So, thanks for letting me address the noise issue in Mills River. I live over on, my wife and I my wife and I live on Old Vanney River. National Air Force, that's how old I am. We were told there would be small airplanes very infrequently, not landing very often. But now it's ten times the airplanes and landing all day, all night, which is nothing concerning Mills River. Then, a little bit, several years passed, they decided it's going to build a racetrack in that area over there close to the airport. I myself and others opposed that very much because of the noise. But then Mills River let a brewery go in, and my neighbors listened to music two and a half miles from the brewery. Day and night. We cannot have a barbecue outside with our family without listening to their music. And that could have made it very unacceptable. None of us danced, so it's just not appealing to us. Also, we've got a lot of truck traffic through there, these cowboys in there, and their dump trucks driving thirty-five mile an hour using compression brakes without exhaust on their trucks down the hills. And it just blasted us out of our homes. It's terrible. And we just, we just feel we've been neglected on some of this stuff. And until this morning, I didn't know there wasn't a noise. And I run into this gentleman back here who was graceful and professional. They said, "We're having a meeting on that tonight." And I said, "Well, I would, I would like to speak." Of course, y'all know about the loud radios. My nephew bought a new motorcycle, saw the mufflers off, and put the radio on. You know, y'all sit in the parking lot, the red lights and cars, six cars down shaking. You know, I understand it's not small. We were sold that it was going to be a small, quiet little Mills River town. When we, all us taxpayers, all us people paying taxes voted to do this at that point. And I understand that that ain't the case, and it never could be the case now. But save a little of Mills River's dignity, and let's save a little bit of the quiet part of it, the small is gone. Last night, this is so disturbing, so disturbing. And this is what prompted me to flag this gentleman down this morning. At eight forty, less than a hundred feet from our home, my wife and I's home. A, I don't think it's an AR fifteen, but it was an automatic weapon, a high-fired automatic weapon. With probably six to eight shots. Now, this is at eight forty, it's pretty dark. Went off within a hundred feet of our house. And we didn't sleep in here last night, may not deny our neighbor. Now, this is not dog noises, this is not, you know, loud muffler noises. This is serious stuff, uh, on a, on fact. The noise is bad, but the same, and I found out this morning that there's nothing that we can do about it and shoot that gun at two o'clock in the morning. And it is loud. And I was in the military, and I do not like to be shot at. So, please consider doing something about some of these. Save a little bit of dignity in Mills River, and let's try to at least keep it quiet. And y'all get a lot more noise complaints than I just listed. I got, I scratched this on the paper. I was so proud when my address went from blessed to terrible. But I'm losing that confidence back, and we're talking about lifelong ruin. So, please consider our neighborhood. And I don't know about other parts of the neighborhood, this is the neighborhood over around Dashville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next is Dale Nelson. And just, we do have a three-minute time limit per individual, so the town manager's going to have a timer. Sort of mention that first, I'm sorry. If you'll state your name for the minutes, please.
Good evening, my name is Dale Nelson. I just wanted to ask for allow us to do this. Daniel, thank you for sending me over the ordinance as it stands right now earlier today. I do want to suggest to catch your name. Stand, stand's point, there's not a lot of parity right now in ordinance. It doesn't define much in there about what is over a limit. Right now, it says perceived interruption of peace and calm. The ordinance that was reviewed once ago listed eighty-five decimals or more. It is out, not permissible, and it's been removed. And so I would suggest putting in more definitions. That way people understand what they can and can't do. Because it seems like a very subjective ordinance the way it's written, and not objective, which could be confusing for businesses or residences of what can and can't happen. I don't think that there's gunfire mentioned at all, like, although there was the first time. So, that's all I wanted to make a comment about was, please make it more objective instead of being as subjective as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jeff Young.
And I had told him he would speak during the public hearing, so it's up to you if you wanted to.
Would you rather speak during the public hearing?
Mayor Davis, I think we're going to talk in the, or speaking of the public comment. I would like to share comments regarding the overall business approach.
Okay, sure.
My general comments that I just pertained to, but this is the second meeting which I've attended. That's a public hearing which this body has left to go in a closed session. If you have something to add. I say somebody that's spent a career serving the staff to public commissions statewide as well as being to account this public meetings or collective officials. That's probably the most inconcerned thing I've seen done twice, forty, forty-five minutes in the first meeting. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that y'all voluntarily offered to serve this town. To serve this town, you have to respect their residents. Actions of this board in the last two meetings have shown basically disdain to actually breaking into the consent. I approve it, and Mayor, this time should at least give the rationale for the proposed meeting, which is permitted under the state statute. But last time, we had no idea what it was, was a permitting agenda being taken up that night. Against night, we understand has to do with land transactions. I see nothing on the agenda that would justify having that before anything else on tonight's agenda. And I would say simple considerations of those who attended. Other than business that you would try to rearrange your agenda with consideration and respect for the town, the folks that are coming before tonight. Comment simply to observe the actions of this body. And Stan, Mayor must set the agenda, and these gentlemen to your left and right are welcome to approve it or modify it. And I ask all of you to hold yourselves and this body to a higher standard. Have some respect and consideration for those folks in this town.
Thank you. All right, and Sue has some public comment that was emailed.
Yes, this is, excuse me. This is from Chad Otten, who is the principal of Mills River Elementary. And he's heading his recreation programs and event support. It is addressed to Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem Caskey, and council members Austin Kimball and Snyder. It is my understanding that the town of Mills River is considering the addition of recreation programs and events to its list of offered services. As the principal of Mills River School and advocate for youth in the community, I'm very much in support of this service. I believe that adding recreational programming and events will greatly enhance the overall health and well-being of our students and their families. Recreation programs for children five and under will help future Falcons be better prepared for kindergarten. A large portion of our students enter kindergarten without ever sitting foot, excuse me, setting foot in a preschool classroom or group setting. Recreational activities such as nature, arts, or sports will help children develop their social and emotional skills, communication skills, and motor skills. These skills are all essential in early childhood development and will enhance children's chances of future academic success. Our current school-age students will also benefit greatly from having quality recreation programs in the community. Children who participate in recreation activities often have higher self-esteem and better overall physical and mental health. I do hope you support the addition of recreation programs in the Mills River community, and I look forward to further partnering with the Parks and Recreation Department to help in any way we can. Chad Otten, Principal, Mills River School.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, so to, back to the consent agenda with the changes. Is there a motion that we adopt the modified consent agenda?
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Others in favor? All right, to the regular agenda. Item A was public hearing for special use permit twenty-one oh one, Warren Sun Site Contractor.
Good evening, Town Council Mayor. This morning, I received word from the applicant on a special use permit twenty-one dash zero one, Warren Sun Site Contractors, that they have withdrawn their application for consideration. So, there's no need to take any action on this item, the application's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Excuse me Shay. Sue, it's a matter of order. We recessed this. So, if we don't take no action, the recess just sits there.
The public hearing dies.
Well, it dies anyway without.
If you do not reconvene it, because it was recessed to a specific date and time. If it is not reconvened at that date and time, it dies.
We're dead.
Thank you.
All right, so striking that off. So, next on the agenda is public hearing for the ordinance amendments, chapter one fifty-two, nuisances concerning the noise ordinance. I will make a motion to enter into public hearing. Others in favor? Daniel, you have to present to us.
Yes, thank you. This evening, you have before you the final draft of the noise ordinance that we've been discussing for the last several months. To Mr. Nelson's point earlier, this has undergone some iteration and some modification this late winter and early spring. What you see before you this evening is the concise version that deals strictly with amplified sound and unreasonably loud sound. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this. But everything that you've seen, you see in this packet tonight has been presented, was presented to you last, or excuse me, in March.
Are there any interested parties to present? Now, we have public comment on the noise ordinance. Mr. Young?
I don't believe what is being considered tonight is what the paper that I printed out. It's arbitrary, ambiguous. Things like unusually loud, ordinary sensibilities, interrupting normal peace and calm. And should this council let to a, should this endeavor, I just want to bring your attention to your exceptions. You can make a definition of what prohibitive noise is, which would cover a super wide range of noises. But in your exceptions, we can lay out three. Not in order, but basically, two of them, ones parade, spares, et cetera, the other one for the business reasons. One on point your attention to is one's trying to catch all fair thing else instead of basically rate, so you know, any noise resulting from activities of tender preparation permitted by law and for which a license permit has been granted by the town. I'm here basically to talk about agriculture, to say about minimum noise associated with agriculture in this town, I don't recall, under the first act of that exception, of that lawful noises in conjunction with production agriculture. However, there is no provision in it as it's written, because it says the only thing that's exempted. If it's not religious, if it's not parade, has to have a permit or license in this town. It's not or, it's and. So, that means my calf's bawling tonight because I just leave him. He runs prayer at Sunday because of the conflict. If somebody says that's interrupting their normal peace and calm, if it's basically violating the ordinance, I'm subject to ramifications of violation. Unless I come to be able to get a permit or a license. And so, with that being said, I just want to remind this council that I'm informed and the council is under, is well aware of this. The first ordinance passed by this board, a body, that's fifteen oh one, that is by court order. About prohibitive restrictions on agricultural activities, this is that this town will not take up or impose any regulation restriction on acres land more stranded than state and federal law, and it includes a whole bunch of things that go out, including the sounds. So, I want to call your attention to language that does not provide a means of agriculture to make noise associated with production agriculture without being a violation of a security permit. And if that is the case, you will move forward with this as it's written, it will be a direct violation of fifteen oh one of your ordinance, separate from restrictions on acres land.
Covered as exempt on line two oh five through two oh nine.
What version of the ordinance do you have?
Because I know I specifically asked to add that language. Page eight. Lines two oh five, two oh six, two oh seven, two oh eight, and two oh nine. This chapter shall not regulate property being actively used as a bona fide farm, which is any tract of land used for dairying, the raising of agricultural products, forest products, livestock, or poultry, or any other use defined as agriculture in fifteen oh four dash oh oh seven of the town code, and including facilities for the sale of such products from the premises, premises where produced.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. This, there was an exception added the last time we discussed this to clearly specify that agriculture is exempt from the standards of the noise ordinance.
Jim has an updated version. Oh, okay, you did.
So, so is that, going back to Jess's point. So, it's my understanding where we've done that first ordinance dealing with agriculture. It doesn't matter what ordinance is the town does from here on out. That is still part of any ordinance. Is that?
That's right. Yeah, yeah.
And I specifically asked to include that language in here, just so there was no gray area. For clarity, yeah. All right, other council discussion?
I think I would just like to clarify, since they brought it up, the, with the DB readings, the reason why we took that out was because from an enforcement standpoint, we're relying on the Sheriff's Department. In the Sheriff's Department, their advice to us was to take it out because they have no means of measuring. So, if they come out to a house, they can't, if they don't have the tools to measure, then they're ineffective. So, we gave them that side so that they at least have some legal way to take some action.
If you would.
Yeah, so, so I, I do remember one of the meetings, the several months ago, talking about if you think approved to purchase the meters, that they would carry the, it was going to issue. And then there was the discussion of, well, where are they going to measure it from? It's going to be the appropriate lines, it's going to be here, it's going to be from. So, there's all the, many questions, and they're honest questions, many good questions. There are questions that should be answered, that should be written in the ordinance. So, there's very clear understanding for the business operators and the, you know, the residents. So, it's a good decision of what is possible, what's not. The way it reads, it's, it's, it's one of the most subjective ordinances that I've ever read. You know, it talks about the sensibilities, poor sensibilities. Who defines that? Is that the, is that the officer? The response to it, is it, you know, first answer from the town? And then who defines what is interrupting peace and calm? And there was the, the very clear and defined laws that were written.
You know, and there was the very clear and defined laws, what was, wasn't permissible, it seemed easy, right? It was all over now, it was, there was a question, you know, A plus B equals C, you can't do this, you can't do this, you cannot, and so now it's just, anybody could call anything an interruption to peace and calm.
So, just to respond to you, just for a second, what we ended up with originally did include decimal readings and that sort of thing. In discussions with the officers who would have to carry these, we discussed the expense of them, and also they have to be constantly calibrated. The other thing is, I think there's one or two in the entire county, so where they would be at any given time, day or night, was under question. So what we elected to do was to go back and revisit this and mirror the Henderson County ordinance. So what you're reading is very, very close to the Henderson County ordinance, which nobody seems to have any problem with. So that's how we got to where we are, just, so, just, just to clarify. Yeah. Yeah.
One of the things that we wrestled with was, so, since Jim's sitting here, I'm going to pick on him. So is that if, if he's at Roger's house, dealing with Roger, then the noise part at your house is going to be down the list. So like Stan was talking about, if somebody's shooting a gun at 12 o'clock at night, well, chances are, that's going to be low on Jim's response thing. Well, so, we was trying to balance the response time, we was trying to balance our customers, and we was trying to balance what we pay the Sheriff's Department for. Now, is that if Roger's shooting his gun and somebody's breaking in your house, I'd, I'd want the Sheriff's Department to go to your house first. But now, by the time he gets to my house, chances are, I'm going to already be in bed. I'm not going to be shooting a gun no more. But is that, I see your point, and I see Stan's point. So we wrestled with that probably for a long time, is that how do we prioritize noise ordinance that affects you, and then trying to keep this guy safe? So is that, understand what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I can understand, and I've listened to the, 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 the part of it, and I, 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 as you should, it's not going to be, but, but it is very subjective. And I was, I was, I understand it, I understand it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Any additional discussion? Or is a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right. Okay, do we now have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion we adopt the noise ordinance as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of adopting the noise ordinance as presented tonight? Say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item, next item on the agenda, fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget presentation. And I believe Sue has a comment to read during that as well. But, oh no, that was.
No, that was the one I've already read.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was thinking stop because I was busy. Children.
Sugar. Sugar, y'all, what? Sugar.
Okay, thank you for your patience, my multiple laps around the room. Brian, would you, you're going to have to advance for me, this is just, I said Brian. Please, I guess the thing won't reach, right, whenever you're ready. Oh, the mouse isn't plugged in. This is a clown school. All right, so finally, here's the budget agenda. So this evening, Mayor and Council, I'd like to formally introduce to you the recommended fiscal year 2022 budget. I'm going to start by going over the calendar of how we got to where we are and where we're going. And then mostly for the benefit of the public, I want to just touch on local government, North Carolina in general terms. I know you guys have seen this information, but I think it's good for the public, public to hear it as well. And then we'll talk about a list of accomplishments. It's been a busy year. I think it's worth looking back and just seeing what you, what you've been able to do in the year of a pandemic and many other challenges. Then, of course, we'll talk about how we developed the budget, and then we will actually talk about the budget. So let's go ahead and get started, Brian, if you wouldn't mind, please, moving on. So to date, we've had divisioning session, we've worked with departmental budgets, we have heard from nonprofits, we had one budget workshop tonight, you're seeing the presentation, which is a step in the, in the statutory requirements. Next week, the Finance Committee is going to meet and review the budget, and then tentatively, we've got scheduled a public hearing for June 10th with adoption on June 24th. The deadline for adoption is July 1st, the start of the next fiscal year. One more. Okay, so there's a, there's a couple of different concepts here on the screen, Dillon's Rule versus Home Rule. And the difference is, in a Home Rule state, the, the local government, the county, the municipality, the village, whatever the case may be, they, they kind of set their own rules. They don't have to rely on the state to authorize them to do things. There aren't a lot of towns on, on the East Coast that operate on a, on a Home Rule basis. Most of us are Dillon's Rule state, and a lot of states out West are Home Rule. So what Dillon's Rule means is anything that the local government does, at the county, at the local level, school board, what have you, has to be authorized by the statutes. And it's not, it's not enough to say, well, the statutes, don't say I can't do it, the statutes have to actually say you can do it for you to do anything, whether it be zoning, street lighting, whatever the case may be. Go ahead, Brian. So I want to touch briefly on authorized versus mandated services. Go ahead, Brian. So there's a list of uses that are authorized by the state, and that counties can provide. I won't go through all these, but it's kind of the more common ones are ag extensions, the courts, obviously, detention, public health, schools is a big one, obviously. Go ahead, Brian. And then authorized for municipalities, that last list was only for counties, this one's only for municipalities, cemeteries, gas systems, sidewalks, streets, traffic engineering. And then you have a list of services that are authorized to both counties and municipalities. And again, I'm not going to read this list, but you can see it's airports, public transit, drug abuse programs, parks, industrial promotion, economic development, law enforcement, water, watershed improvement. Go ahead, Brian. And then there's a list of mandated services. So I mentioned that you have authorized services, then you have mandated services. And the mandated services are the ones that the state requires the county in North Carolina to do. And that is this list on the screen right now, public education, public health, mental health, courts, building code enforcement. So there's quite a few that the counties have to plan for each year, regardless of what their other priorities may be. Contrast that with mandated municipalities or mandated services in towns, it's only building code enforcement, which is a little bit funny, because most municipalities don't actually provide that service directly. They typically contract with their county. Since the county already has officials for the rest of the county, it's oftentimes more cost effective for them to just do that. And this is in fact what Mills River does to achieve this service. Mills River Services specifically, fire protection, law enforcement through contracts, we have planning responsibilities in-house, street lighting, parks and recreation, and then new this year, street maintenance, and I'll get to that in just a moment. So again, just in summary, there's authorized services, there's mandated services, and then, of course, there's Mills River's services, and that's what we're going to be talking about later on in the budget. Okay, so over the last 10, 11, 12 months, a lot of different things have happened, a lot's been going on. And this, this council should be proud of themselves for what it's been able to do in the year 2020 and 2021, the year of the first pandemic in 100 years, really unknown what was going to be going on with the economy. We budgeted for a drastic drop in sales tax revenue, fortunately, we didn't see that. So there was just a lot of uncertainty. Even faced with that, the town was able to accomplish a great many things. And first on the list intentionally is the baseball field, because that's, I think that's a real gem. It's a real statement by the community that they, they want to invest and, and invest in quality amenities. And then, of course, solar panels, those are on all the town's buildings right now. Just recently, the charging stations were installed and brought online. As of yesterday, I believe, we had about 60 charges, 35 or so unique drivers, so they are getting used. And then the stream bank grant, that's kind of a carryover, but we actually made progress on it this year, the, the contract being signed. The permits to the state were just submitted last week, so that we can get that design, or excuse me, that construction work permitted. The fishing pier needed to be repaired, that was the Wildlife Resource Commission doing that. Nonetheless, it was an improvement to the park. Then the bike and pedestrian grant, we applied for that last year, finally got all the paperwork from the state wrapped up, and, and that was signed by the state and the consultants just a few weeks ago. So that, we're having a first kickoff meeting for that a week from Monday. Also this year, thanks to the CARES Act, last summer, we were able to make quite a few improvements to the facilities related to COVID-19. Examples include hand sanitizers, sanitizing stations, touchless plumbing fixtures with the sinks and the toilets, touchless water fountains. We were able to secure some software to provide the ability to do this at Zoom, people to see remotely. And I think most importantly, services never were interrupted. You can, you can call around to a lot of different places in the state, and many of them don't have town hall open yet. They closed it down last year, have been working completely remote, or maybe have a very skeleton crew in the building. We were fortunate in that that was not the case here. We maintained services, we did stagger schedules a little bit to make sure we were, only a few of us in the office at any given time, but budget and service were never interrupted, which was a good thing that I'm very proud of. Go ahead, Brian. So when we're talking about a budget, first of all, we have to talk about what a budget is and what it is not. And then we have some statutory requirements regarding the timeline, the roles that staff plays, council plays in the budget process, the different components of the budget, it's made up of a few different things. And then, most importantly, of course, it has to be balanced. And so that's what we're presenting to you this evening is a balanced budget. Go ahead, Brian. So in terms of the calendar, what you're seeing on the screen now, the red dates are dates that are required by the statute, kind of General Statute 159, that outlines the budget process. So April 30th, all the departmental requests are due to the Budget Officer. The budget presentation is due by June 1st. Last year, we did it on May 14th, this year it's May 13th, so we're, we're ahead of that schedule. There's not a date for a public hearing or the adoption, the deadline for adoption is July 1st, though. So we're on track to, to keep up with that. So, one more, Brian, hit the thing on the jigger. The budget is a policy document. Of course, you'll see the spreadsheets throughout the document with all the revenues and expenditures, and that's extremely important. But really, the purpose of those funding, that funding and those expenditures is to provide services to the citizens of Mills River. And that's done and is prioritized by how you invest the town's money. If you, if something is not a high priority, then it obviously wouldn't get as much funding. If it is a high priority, then it should receive more funding. And so, yes, there are a lot of spreadsheets involved, and I'm not discounting the value of that, that's absolutely required. But really, in its, in its simplest terms, a budget is a policy document that guides how things are going to be happening in the town. So the different components I mentioned, there's the budget message, this is just the cover of the budget you see, major expenditure highlights, and then the summary. So we've got, on the right side there, you've got the summary of the budget message, as well as the revenues and expenditures. Okay, so for the overview of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, the property tax rate is not changing, it's proposed to stay the exact same at eight cents for the town, and then 11 cents collected on behalf of Mills River Fire. Property valuation, as of a couple of months ago, from the county was estimated at $1,462,410,206, which is an increase over last year. We're budgeting for a 98% collection rate. In the current fiscal year, we budgeted for 97%, mostly because we were concerned about the impacts of COVID-19 and people's ability to pay their bill. Fortunately, that, that really hasn't been the case this year. As of this week, we're, we're 98.7%, I believe, collection rate for the year. Our capital investment is $769,750, and we'll get into that in a moment, but that's for a couple of purchases and construction projects. Cost of building adjustment is 2%, and potential merit is up to 3%. So your total budget for the year is $4,926,100. So let's start with revenue. Any questions so far? Okay, so starting with revenue, uh, you can see there on the slide that the fiscal year 21 budget is shown. That's not the amended budget, that's what was adopted last year as the operating budget. Although it's very similar to the amended budget. And then in the green column, you've got the fiscal year 22 estimated revenues. And there was a slight increase in, in property tax revenue expected due to two things. One, property values increasing the overall valuation of the community, uh, and two, a higher collection rate. Again, last year we budgeted for 97% collection and this budget, we're budgeting for 98% collection rate. Motor vehicles are anticipated to go up a little bit, um, typically a hundred percent collection rate. Uh, other highlights and expenditure, excuse me, revenues, uh, the big one is state shared revenues, which is sales tax. That's a big jump over the number last year, but again, if you remember from last year, we were anticipating a 30% reduction in, in collection over compared to actual collections last year. So fortunately, we, we did not see that low of a collection rate and I'll get into detail on that in just a few moments. So this 900,000 is, is a conservative estimate based on the numbers that we've seen this year. And then we have grants, um, near the bottom there for the park and the bicycle pedestrian plan, excuse me, the bicycle greenway. And then the, the new one at the bottom of the, of the line there, Powell Bill is, um, a new source of revenue coming in. Uh, if the town would like to pursue that as far as the Powell Bill program, um, and we are anticipating entering that program, uh, beginning in July. It's approximately 135,000 dollars. We won't know the exact number, uh, until the state publishes what that will be later on. So again, your overall operating budget is 400, excuse me, 4,926,100 dollars, which is a 9% increase year over year. Same information, just broken down a little bit differently. You can see that, uh, ad valorem taxes, which are property taxes, uh, are the highest percentage of revenues and that's normal for communities. The second largest would be state shared revenues, which again, that's sales tax. Um, I did for, for graphic purposes, combine some of the fees together, which are permitting fees, shelter fees, uh, special event fees, just because they were such a small proportion of the overall budget by themselves. Fund balance appropriated, you can see at the top there, 600,000, 607,000 dollars, 750 dollars to cover capital expenditures, which would be one-time expenditures for things like construction of the shelter, purchase of equipment and so forth. Any questions on revenue? The, you know the methodology of accounting as far as their estimates?
But if there wasn't a house on January 1st, but yeah.
To answer your question, we don't, we don't get ahead of the tax office on, on our estimates. I guess you could say that.
Yeah, I mean, there's like a hundred houses in the works, so suddenly there's an extra hundred houses worth of tax.
Right.
Is a, is a bonus.
Anything else on that? Okay, so just a little bit of historical information for everybody. Still, still in the realm of revenue, we have property tax levy. Again, this is the total amount that's actually taxed, not, not collections, just the, the property value essentially. That's steadily increased over the years. This last year it was just over 1.3 billion dollars. Uh, next slide please, Brian. Uh, and then off of that levy, you have collections. So of course that's also continued to increase as well as the property levy has increased. And so what you get when you combine them is, uh, this graph showing collective versus budgeted. And, and by and large, this is what we want to see. This is where your collective rate is, uh, exceeding your budgeted amount. And I think with the exception of one year, uh, we've met or exceeded that. Uh, more revenue, this is sales tax. This is the second largest source of funding for the town. Uh, you can see that trend line there is obviously trending upwards. This is, um, every month, uh, since 2009 broken out, what you see are the quarters at the bottom of the screen there. And this is a normal line as far as the, the highs and lows. They fluctuate month to month. Uh, there's always dips, um, after the holidays and things like that. So this is, this is normal, um, very, very high number fortunately. Uh, and then more importantly, monthly sales tax collections is what, uh, excuse me, annual sales tax collection is what we're looking at in terms of the budget. And so again, for some history going back to 2009 up till, up to the current year. Now the current year, which is 2021 on this chart is an estimate. Uh, I took the collections as of, I believe it was the end of April, estimated the next two months based on that to come up with the 1,026 dollars. Go ahead, Brian. Uh, and so this is, um, actual versus budgeted numbers. Again, 2021 is an estimate and in 2022, we don't have anything yet because obviously we haven't collected anything. Uh, but what she, again, similar to property, to property taxes, um, the budgeted amount has routinely been below the actual amount. Uh, so that's, that's a good thing. And you'll see that the drop in the budgeted amount for this year, um, was what we had estimated based off of that 863,000 dollars last year, a 30% reduction, that's how we came up with the 560. Uh, unfortunately, we've, we far exceeded that for the year. Any questions on revenues? Okay, so the next thing. Uh, our expenditures. And so again, similar to the revenue chart you saw a moment ago, this is comparison year over year from the current budget to the proposed budget for next year. Uh, we've got major increases, uh, in, uh, let's see. First one on the list there is interfund transfer. Uh, you remember, you'll remember last year during the budget, um, council set aside one quarter of one penny, uh, for a capital reserve account for parks and recreation. That was approximately 31,000 dollars. And then this year, the Councilman Snyder, uh, actually had a good idea about planning for the expansion or construction of a new town hall and setting aside a penny for that. So this actually reflects setting aside a penny for capital reserve funding, 75, three quarters of a penny to building expansion or addition or something, new building, whatever that may be. And another quarter of a penny going to parks and recreation. So that is equivalent of 168,000 dollars this year. And then I, I do want to point out, we'll get into the details in a moment, but streets and highways, an 863% increase in, in expenditures is because we're budgeting for Powell Bill funds coming in and going out. The town is not actually spending that much more on, on that. Go ahead, Brian. So again, same information, looking at it a little bit differently. Uh, broader categories, fire of courses, is the largest expenditure. Uh, the police, which is the law enforcement contract with Henderson County, that went up slightly, slightly this year. Capital, again, are the capital expenditures, the one-time, uh, projects. And then of course you've got administration and the rest of your services listed in there. So as far as the expenditures, I want to highlight a couple of things. Uh, from, from the administration department, street maintenance, parks and recreation, then we'll close out with capital investment. Go ahead, Brian. Okay, so on, on the expenditure side for administration, there's a few changes this year. Highlighting community services, public engagement, productivity and compliance. And I'll get into those in the next slide, please. So what I mean by that is community relations, uh, and community services. Last year when we had nonprofit requests come to the town, those were budgeted in the community relations line item. Uh, we did not have a good category that fit that last year, so that's where we put it. This year we actually created a new line for what we're calling community services. And the 18,000 dollars you see there is reflective of the housing assistance corporations request as well as Smart Start. You remember they came to the meeting in March requesting 5,000 dollars. Um, and staff was asked to speak with Glenn Marlowe about, uh, working with contributing funding for that school. And so Smart Start worked with Glenn Marlowe and, and Smart Start has requested additional 3,000 dollars to fund their kindergarten program, transition program, which is the same thing they did last year at, uh, Mills River Elementary. So that increased by 3,000 dollars from the last time we saw it. And then this is, um, it's a savings, but I think it's neat to point out under electricity, um, we're budgeting a 6,000 dollar reduction in that. And that's a direct impact of the solar panels on the buildings, being able to offset a lot of that usage. And then, uh, Henderson County Board of Elections is new, uh, this year because there's an election coming up. And, uh, we, we fund that every other year. And then the, the one, um, Brian, if you'll hit it one more, please. Um, the last line out of there, which is maintenance contracts and software, uh, that's increased this year for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, the hope of purchasing an Adobe, um, license for all of staff. Right now we have two in the office and Sue uses it to prepare packets and it's, it would be, uh, more efficient if, if she had her own license, for example, to be able to do what she does rather than borrowing a computer. Uh, Brinet has increased their annual, uh, maintenance fees for server management. And then Zoom is, was purchased last year through the CARES Act. And we would like to, uh, continue that subscription so that we can continue to stream meetings like this. Uh, and it has also proven to be a very, very good way to meet with developers, um, remotely before we, uh, have to meet in person to go over actual plans. So it's really been a great productivity tool for, for everybody. And then TeamViewer also came out of the CARES funding last year. And that was, uh, that is a, a software platform that allows an employee to work remotely from their home, from a hotel, from a hospital, wherever they happen to be. They can log into the machine here in the building and, and drive that machine and do work just as if they're sitting at the desk. And we've all come to really appreciate that capability, um, a couple of times this year. I think, I think actually I might've been the only one. I was exposed to someone who had COVID. I never tested positive, I tested negative for it, but out of the abundance of caution, I've worked from home for about a week. And it didn't, there was no interruption in my ability to do anything. And then Archive Social is a new one this year. And Archive Social is a platform that, it's a subscription-based software and it, its sole purpose is to archive social media and website information. Everything that's posted on Facebook, um, right now is, is a public record and those are supposed to be maintained and archived for record-keeping purposes. And yes, they are being recorded by Facebook, but Facebook is under no obligation to maintain those for any length of time. Um, and if something is deleted from the Facebook servers, then it's, it's gone, there's no record of it anymore. And we should be preserving all of those records, uh, for a couple of different reasons. One, obviously for record-keeping. Two, if we get requests for discoveries, for example. And three, it's, it's, we're required to by state law, maintain, um, records of all the different things that the town does. For example, minutes, uh, public comments, uh, electronically. This platform would allow us to do that automatically.
Question.
Yes.
So. Even if Facebook, and I'm not a user, even if Facebook deletes it, so what? Is that we still have our records here, correct?
No, we don't. We're, the only record that we have of, of anything that is on Facebook is when we, um, record these meetings on, when these meetings are played on Facebook, it keeps the stream. But if, if that is deleted somehow, uh, that record doesn't exist anymore.
But legally, we are not required to put them on Facebook.
Right. That's right. No, you're right, you're right.
Is that Facebook is not. Is not a true record. Is that, is that right?
It is, the town has an account. So anything the town does on there is.
Okay.
Should be preserved.
So if Sue's records. That's stored here. Comes into conflict with Facebook. Then we always go back to our records here and not Facebook. So Facebook during the virus is an option to reach the citizens.
That's right.
So it is not a requirement.
The streaming of the, the meetings are, is not, no. It's not a requirement by any stretch. The, the, what I'm referring to is, is, it's outside the meetings, people are commenting on there and posting things and, and that's, all that is additional record. Yes.
But legally, we do not have to provide that.
The stream or the?
No, arch, archiving Facebook. Meetings. Legally.
We have to keep a record of anything that's posted on there.
Now, what I'm saying is this, legally, we do not have to archive Facebook content.
We do.
We do?
Yeah, that's, that's town.
What statute is that? Show it to me.
I can't quote it at this moment. It, but that's a requirement, uh, all that is town business. It's a, it's just as if we're sending emails back and forth.
It's part of the open records law.
Thank you.
I understand that.
And, and I think you're, you're misunderstanding a distinction. We do not have to have and post to Facebook, but once we do, we have to keep it.
That, that's a good clarification.
Okay, so if we have to keep it. Like you said. We are at a third-party vendors whim. Facebook, they could delete it, is that they could delete anytime they want to and there's nothing that, that we could do.
That's right. That's right. Yes, the Archive Social is a platform, records things nearly instantaneously. It's not instant, there's usually a couple of minutes delay. But what that does, and this is not, um, I mean, the FBI uses this software, the, the State Department of Archives uses this software. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's served well for a number of different clients. And so what, what TeamViewer does is go in behind the scenes and capture everything that's posted. It captures the time it was posted, from where it was posted, who posted it. And then if someone deletes it and then reposts it, it captures all of that information. And that's what we, that's the difference between someone just posting on Facebook versus keeping a legitimate record of it. Okay, uh, so the street maintenance, I mentioned this a moment ago, I just want to clarify for everyone's benefit. We have been providing street lighting, uh, since the town incorporated as a service. And that's been about 15,000 dollars a year, uh, for expenditure purposes. They have lowered their rate, so we've reflected that in the budget. Um, the street maintenance though is the new service that I mentioned from the, which is coming directly from Powell Bill funding. And Powell Bill funding is available to any municipality across the state, um, that meets certain standards. And it depends when the town was incorporated, which standards apply. For Mills River, having incorporated after the year 2000, we have to provide four of the listed services, which is what we do with the police, fire, zoning and street lighting. And you have to maintain road mileage, that's the other one, the other requirement which we do. We own town center drive that we have to maintain for the benefit of the public. And the Powell Bill funding has to be accounted for each year, does not have to, does not have to be spent in its entirety each year. We, we do have to account for the revenue. And I want to make crystal clear that it is discretionary. This does not mean if we accept this money, that all of a sudden the town has to start accepting streets for ownership and maintenance. The town has that option, just as the town does now without Powell, Powell Bill funding. Uh, but this would provide a revenue stream if in the event, in the future, the town wanted to look into that, there's at least some money there to, to do something with. What I think is really of interest though, for the, for the benefit of Mills River, is this money can be used for more than just streets. It can be used for the construction of greenways or multi-use trails, uh, like the Mills River Trail, for example, Mills River Valley Trail, sidewalks. And of course regular street maintenance, so it's, it goes beyond just actual roads. Yes, exactly, that's exactly what the money is for. The memo from the state that they provide as far as guidelines states at the. The memo from the state that they provide as far as guidelines states at the beginning is primarily used for the maintenance and repair of streets.
So one, just a quick question in on the Powell Bill. Once we are enrolled in that program with the state, so will we, as town council, be able to put guidelines of our own about how this money might be used in the future?
Absolutely. I think I'd be wise to do.
I would like to maybe put that on our agenda at some point, talk about that. If you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah, the the first round of money, I believe, comes in October, so I I think we should shoot to have it done before then, that policy. Okay, so Parks and Recreation, a couple of highlights here. Under the first line there, salaries and wages regular, that's regular full-time staff. We are requesting a new position to provide programming and special events. This is something that I had intended to propose last year in the upper in the budget. But again, with pandemic and really having no idea what was going to happen, I didn't feel comfortable requesting funding for a position that we honestly didn't know if we were going to be able to use because, again, we don't know what the lockdown situation was going to be. Under professional services, you'll notice a significant drop in that. That was beefed up last year for the system-wide Parks and Recreation Master Plan for that contract, and that's nearly complete, so we're not budgeting for any more expenditure for that. We keep some money in there in the event that we need to hire someone to help us out with a design or something like that on a very small project-by-project basis. Equipment has come down. We've purchased what we need as far as baseball field goes for now. And then the other big change here is is programming. And that is, we're requesting thirty thousand dollars to hold several different events as well as develop programs that the town would be responsible for. And those things include programming could be anything from yoga instruction, tennis lessons, to small day camps. It's really, the possibilities are really kind of endless. It's just a matter of what's your priority. And then different events in the year could include things like movies in the park. They could include special events like we did for the Santa tour last year, where we took the network at the fire department and drove all over town. Easter egg hunts. All of those different types of things are all included in this particular line item. I did not include it with your budget when I, when it was sent out this week, but today I sent you some more detailed information about that and broke it down as to as as much of a unit cost as you can get out of this. And then Parks Utilities, again, that reduction is due to electricity usage in the in the solar panels. And then the last major expenditure category, sure.
Is that I thought we decided a couple of months ago that we keep this programmer in the back of our mind and not fund, not hire anybody right now. Is that, this is my problem. Is that at some point in time, we may, we may not need a programmer. But if it's in the budget, somebody's going to raise their hand and say, well, the council passed the budget, let's go ahead and hire them. I don't think that's right. Now, there's other sources of revenue other than the programmer to get some of this stuff done. The first example that I can think of is that you have a nonprofit that's here in Mills River that specifically funds, and you mentioned yoga. Well, is that, who do you think's been funding that? The nonprofit? Now, the library in Hendersonville has money. Is that, let's use this nonprofit's money and some of the library's money to fund this. And you're just talking about the Santa thing? I thought the fire department put that on.
No, the town organized that.
Okay, so how much did the town, how much expense did the town incur in that, other than personnel?
I can't give you that number off the top of my head. We've budgeted for a thousand dollars for it this year. We we did some. Yeah.
So is that, the other thing that I noticed is that I think the staff, or Lee and you guys, is that if they're sitting here at a meeting, then they can either get overtime or comp time. Is that right?
It flex time.
We do not pay overtime.
Okay, so you get comp time.
Flex time.
Okay. So is it specifically mentioned about the Parks and Recreation Director? Why can't they do the same? Is that if they're going to have a movie in the park? And so they need to stay an extra couple of hours? Why can't they get comp time? Or are they on salary?
Certain positions are on salary, and so they don't get comp time or overtime or anything like that.
But you can make arrangements for them to come in at ten o'clock or whatever.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, there there certainly is some capacity in-house to do very limited things, like like last year, the Santa tour. You know, that that was a very limited event that that took, you know, the better part of a month to really plan and organize and to execute. And I think that's the important thing to consider is, it's easy to think about this in terms of, well, if you have an Easter egg hunt, maybe that's three hours on a Saturday morning. But that doesn't include all the hours leading up to it, arranging it, getting all the materials in place, contacting whoever's going to be there that day. So there's a lot of work that goes into it that is, that goes beyond just the day of the event.
So we need a full-time person to do the Easter egg hunt, the Santa thing?
It'd be more than that. It'd be more events than that. And it would, it would, it would also provide additional support to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Personally, I don't think that we need a programmer right now. Now, maybe in December, somewhere up through there, as things start picking up, then yes, we need to revisit this. So my suggestion, this Rogers', is that we do not put this programmer's job in the budget at at this time.
Daniel, I've got a question. What what services is the library providing right now?
I don't know that they're providing anything at this moment. I think they're going to resume storytime, but that's, that's all that they're going to do that at this point.
So it's conceivable that a pro, a programming person would be responsible for classes and any kind of senior citizen events, things, things like that. We're not just talking about Easter egg hunts and 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 Santa Claus, right?
Right.
Truck. I mean, we're talking about an ongoing slate of programs.
Right. Yeah, that's right. And I use those as examples to illustrate some of the work. But it it, the programming could be ongoing year-round for for certainly.
So, I mean, in your discussions with with Nicole, I I guess you guys have maybe talked about a little bit about what this person would be doing in terms of the classes and things that we might be able to offer to the citizens of Mills River if we had this person. Can you kind of fill us in a little bit just to, I think, I think maybe what we're struggling with is is trying to understand what this, what this person would be doing other than the Santa Claus event at Christmas and Easter egg hunts and and things of that nature. And I know we've talked about July Fourth event, which I think would be awesome to do in the park. You know, if we do fireworks out here, that'd be, that'd be really killer. But what what other programs do you foresee this person being responsible for?
I'm just gonna pull up a list real quick on my phone so I don't forget anything.
Okay, great.
Brian, just a, just a, just a quick insert here, is that this nonprofit is called the Friends of the Mills River Library. And they've been sponsoring events here. Don't shake your head. No, I know that they do.
They sponsor very few, and the yoga was paid for by the participants.
Right. But the instructor wanted the money upfront. So Gail wrote him a check. Now, also is that we had Jerry Britton over here. We have the snake, the snake guy up to eighty here. So what I'm saying is that let's use some of this, and so, and we'll use Gail again, since Gail is a treasure, is that she gets donations. Forget about the participant of the yoga people, except Steph is out. But basically, the snake guy was, you know, the kids from the school come in, it was all free. But the Friends of the Mills River Library paid for that guy to bring his snakes down here. And so they use this room. So the library doesn't storytell them. So is that it has nothing to do with the Parks and Recreation person?
Yeah, I understand that, and I definitely see, and I think you're right. I think we should use that program as a supplemental program. But what I'm interested is what services we could leverage using this position to provide an ongoing schedule of a a series of scheduled events for the senior citizens of Mills River, not just special events, exactly. Exactly what Shay said. And I I understand, you know, that we kind of tend to focus on, okay, the Santa Claus thing, Easter, July Fourth, maybe some October kind of event. But I think that there's a lot of opportunity for doing programs using this room, leaving outside, to get senior citizens involved with exercise or crafts or whatever it might be. And I'm just kind of wondering what what Daniel's perspective is on that.
That's right. And that's a good point. Events are a component of what this program would do, not not the, not the job. So other events, excuse me, programs that we've talked about, obviously, thanks for seniors, thanks for kids, like Mr. Auden said on his email, a lot of the folks coming in, well, children coming into school don't have a lot of experience in group activity with group activity. And so we could host things in the park, you know, where the, we have that track trail back there, so we could do nature programs. We could do preschool programs. We could do, again, I mentioned yoga, fitness instruction, any other sort of sport like that that we have facilities to to do. Likely we could provide, we could start a program around it. So it's, again, it's, it's just, it's not just special events. It's it's ongoing programming throughout the year. Does that answer your question or?
I think so. I was just wondering, wondering if you and Nicole had discussed any specifics in terms of the classes that might be hosted and and under this person's purview, so to speak?
Yeah, we've, we've specifically discussed yoga, fitness, tennis lessons as a starting point or something like that.
So Daniel, just real quick, so outside of the special events like movie, movie in the park or something like that, or Santa tour or something like that, outside of those events, would there be anything that this programmer could do that, or the town can provide that that the county is not already providing through, through the rec, through the rec park in the county?
So it's a possibility. We would need to, I don't know off the top of my head what those services might be, but we can certainly look into that.
I think the point's more to have it here in the town versus going to the rec department or somewhere in Hendersonville. I think it's like bringing it home. Because you're going to always duplicate services.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, you know, we are fairly, fairly close to Jackson Park. So I mean, it's not, it's not like it's a real burden for anybody to drive to Jackson Park. Whenever they could get a, maybe a a service that town might start duplicating that the county already provides, and they already pay the tax dollars for the county anyway, so. I would like to, myself, I would like to wait a bit on this programmer position. It's just not through sense, but. And I had one other question. If if y'all want to continue the discussion on the programmer, it's fine. I'll hold my question till later on something else.
I just think that it's important that we get everybody involved. The nonprofit, the library people, Randy Mitten, the Parks and Recreation, the the county. Is that before we go to this expense, is that let's see what's out there?
See, I, not to interrupt you, Roger, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh. I think that would fall under this person's purview. I think, you know, Nicole's pretty overworked as it is. Now, the way I, the way I see it, if we have a programmer, they could coordinate all these different groups who are coming in and and work with the nonprofits. That's my concept of this role. And while I'm not all that opposed to say postponing this just a little bit, because I know we're still dealing with the aftermath of of COVID nineteen, and we're still in the midst of this thing. It's not over yet. But I do see the importance of this. I think going forward to 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 making this a destination and a place, not just for the kids to come play in the playground, but for for our senior citizens who don't otherwise have a place to go. Well, to come do yoga or to come do a ceramics class or to come do whatever it is, and this be their place to do that. I thi- I think having a place to do something is very important. So I'm just, I I think that's the the component for me. I I want to provide services. That's our role as elected officials is to provide services.
I didn't mean to misspeak about the county only providing services at Jackson Park. I know they do go out in the in the communities and do services and programs in other areas, so. Just wanted to make that clear.
I would be in favor of funding the position, even if we don't fill it right away, if we want to wait until the fall when we know a little bit more about what the year or what the fiscal year will bring as far as COVID. But I don't see a reason not to go ahead and fund it in the budget.
You said, I agree is that maybe towards the fall, maybe towards Christmas, give or take, after this virus crap is done, then I think that it's important to look at this again. At some point in time, will we need a programmer? I think so. Is that we've got three hundred things going on at the park in the same time, and somebody needs to coordinate those. I agree. My problem is that once it falls, is that we can always add it to the budget. Is that, let's say, October the first.
Right.
We could always add it to the budget. I'm just afraid of past experience, things get put into budget, and all of a sudden, we have a new person here.
No, we were clear last year on capital. We funded things, but we didn't approve them. So I don't think we have a pattern of being out of line.
I'm not going to air my, I'm not going to air the dirty laundry here.
Brian Kimball, I think, has been waiting patiently back here.
Oh.
Have you guys done any polling and and it's been brought up with, you know, we're in a, we're still in a pandemic, we'll just say that. You know, we are coming out of it, but you're talking about the summer months or the months where people could do stuff outside. And you're talking about providing services to senior citizens who are the most at-risk population. So, you know, if you start looking at the months that we serve and you start factoring like October, you're well, even before then, probably September, you're moving things indoor. So from September to that April timeframe, you're going to be mostly indoors. Is that at-risk community, are those people even going to feel comfortable coming to those type of scenarios? And and I think that's some important information that we that we needed. We may be willing to provide the services, but are those people willing to participate in those services? And we don't know that. So that would be something that that I would be curious to know. I do agree that the town at some point is going to need a programming position. I'm all for providing those services here and 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 having a spot that's a community-based and things like that. That's kind of where I'm at. So I just don't necessarily want to, you know, I think there's you know, I think there's more discussion that has to be had, I don't mind it being in the budget, but maybe there's more discussion that has to be had before we pull the trigger on it. That's my concern.
Just wanted to point out one of the questions that was asked in the, as part of the, the survey that, that has resulted in our parks plan. Ninety-five percent of the people surveyed wanted programs. That's, that's a ridiculously high number. Ninety-five percent of the people who responded to that survey wanted programs. So I think about that and I think, okay, there is a clear mandate that we've been presented with and a challenge to us to provide those services. And I, to answer Brian's question, I, I think, and this is just what I'm seeing in the community. As people are vaccinated, they're more and more likely to want to participate in events. I mean, I'm seeing it out of High Vista, pools getting ready to open and I guarantee you it's gonna be packed every day. So, um, you know, I, I really think that we should proceed with this. I think we should release budget for it, even if, even if we, you know, say, all right, let's, let's look more towards the fall and gear up for this, this as we approach the, the, the fall season. So this person has time to gear up for the Santa event and maybe that would be the kickoff of the year for this person. Or an October event or whatever it might be, right, Fall Festival of some sort. I would really love to see some more fully developed programs taking place here at the park to, to draw people here and programs to keep them engaged here at the park. So I'm, I'm in favor of this, I think we should put it in budget.
Any other questions on Parks and Recreation?
Tell me about the golf cart.
Oh, sure. The golf cart is a replacement for the Polaris, which has, I think, approximately twenty-seven, twenty-six thousand hours on it. And it, it routinely needs to be repaired. It's a little bit loud and the golf cart would serve as a replacement for that. That's quiet and would be less intrusive to the park experience and it's a new vehicle that we can rely on for several more years.
So are we gonna sell the Polaris?
We could likely do that, yeah, we put it on like gov deals, for example.
And so how much is the golf cart gonna cost?
The lowest bid we got was eight thousand dollars. The lowest bid we got was for eight thousand dollars. We've requested ten thousand, just to make sure we can get what we need when it's time to get it, not to come back for another request.
Well, that's not your average golf cart though either, I mean, that thing's a monster.
Right, that's, that's a good point, yeah, I mean, this is designed to be a maintenance golf cart with a bed on the back of it so that you can haul some stuff. But, but really what happens now when folks are out in the park and the Polaris runs around, you know, it's just, it's a loud engine, that's, that's just what it is. And it idles a lot and they're, you know, getting stuff out of the bathroom when they're changing or getting, picking up trash. I think golf carts a lot quieter and it, it should be more reliable. Obviously, if we ever get the gas shortage, hopefully that won't be an issue, the golf cart.
Will it, will it be electric?
It's just a replacement of a, of a vehicle that you already have now, right? Routine replacement. My question, before I forget it. And that, that happens quite often. On the budget, on the line items, I didn't see, do you foresee Daniel Allen Steinbeck? I know he's on retainer like for the planning position, so do you see, we have a new guy coming on? Is his, is Allen's time, yeah, gonna, gonna diminish some as this new position comes aboard?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, I didn't highlight it in this presentation, but it's in, it's in the budget document. The, I believe we budgeted fifty percent of what we budgeted last year for professional services, I think is what it dropped down to. And that, that would be enough to pay Allen for basically a couple of days a month if we needed him. But the, the idea is with the new planner coming on board, there'll be a transition period between the two of them. Because Allen's been obviously working on a lot of projects with developers lately, so that, that'll take a little bit of time. The comp plan, his work anyway, will be wrapped up very, very soon with that. And then it's up to the council as far as its adoption. But what we're, what we're potentially thinking is with this American Rescue Plan funding, which again, we don't know exactly what we can do with it. But if there's anything programmatic that the town might want to explore, we would likely need some outside expertise for that. You know, if, you know, one of the examples, I'm not suggesting that we do this, it's just an example. But there's, you know, small business funding opportunities, grants or loans or something like that. We're not equipped to do that in-house, so we would look to Allen or something like that.
And if he's watching, I'm not trying to shoot Allen out of the saddle or anything, but I like Allen, but anything we can do in-house, I'd prefer to do it.
Well, sure.
In-house.
Yeah, that's.
Since you mentioned the American Rescue Plan funding, Daniel, I just wanted to mention to council that their guidance has come out. There is an eighty-five page PDF that I have in my possession, which outlines all the ways that municipalities can spend it. I have not read it yet, but I'll be happy to share it with anyone who wants it. Yes, I will.
And I'll, I'll touch on that in just a moment. Any other questions on Parks and Recreation before we get into the capital? Okay, so capital investment, these are typically one-time expenditures. The recommendation is to fund these out of the existing fund balance, unassigned fund balance next year. And I'll just start from the top. Brian, what is the next slide? I just don't remember, okay. Okay, you can go back one, please. So last year we created the Capital Improvement Plan and created five different categories in which to place projects. These are public facilities, transportation, parks, recreation, community development and equipment. Obviously, these are not one hundred percent perfect categories, but we have placed things where we think makes the most sense. So starting at the top with public facilities, there's been talk the last several years, but a little bit more serious this year of figuring out what to do with this building, whether we want to expand it, leave it here for the library or Parks and Rec and then build a new town hall somewhere else, whatever that may be. And so we've reached out to the architect that designed this building and got a proposal for a space needs assessment. And that's where they would come in and speak with staff, speak with US Council. There'd be a public engagement component to it about what the, the town needs moving forward. Looking out to twenty years in the future, so that whatever we do decide to do, if something is decided upon, won't have to be done for a long time. Transportation, sixty thousand dollars and that is accounting for the Mills River Valley Trail grant. Conserving Carolina has raised approximately fifty-two thousand dollars of that. So they're working on wrapping that up for us, so it's really just a matter of that, we, we have the contract in hand with the state. So I'll give you a more detailed update on that at your next meeting. Parks and Recreation, there's a couple of things in there, the picnic shelter, the golf cart. And I cannot remember the third one. Parks and Recreation is the, oh, the Streamback Project, of course. The Streambank French project I've, I've mentioned a couple of times tonight is, is a grant up to fifty percent match of the seventy-five thousand dollar maximum. So you'll see that there's a seventy-five thousand dollar line item in there for grant funding. The other seventy-five thousand dollars needs to be budgeted for, so that's what we're showing here. The picnic shelter, we had originally planned to bid that out this summer. However, as I'm sure you've all heard, lumber prices are through the roof right now. And so much so that we're really unable to get a solid quote because contractors are telling us their prices are only good for a week or two. So what we've done is included the original estimate, which we got from Carolina Specialties when they were working on the baseball field. So we're requesting that money, which was the original amount, five hundred thousand. But did not bid the project until January first at the earliest. Because we're hoping that lumber prices stabilize and come down even by that point. So again, the, that money is to fund the picnic, the small picnic shelter that we're currently designing, but we want to postpone that work until January and hopefully things will stabilize. On the community development line, there's twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars in there for a new website. And that is what I've mentioned recently, a new platform that provides greater functionality for the town, greater engagement for the citizens, that's a big component of it, it allows them to be more, the public to be more involved. It allows staff to get information out more efficiently. I know I'm really getting into the weeds here, but with our current platform, you basically have to duplicate your efforts if you want to get something updated. And that's just really time consuming and kind of a waste of time. With the newer platform, you still have to update things, of course. But it, the way that it's built is it always shows what's most recent on top. I know that's really getting to minutia, but it's a very user-friendly platform. It does have some greater functionality in terms of public announcements and getting the word out to people, you can sign up for text alerts, you know, if the town posts an emergency of some kind on the website. If you want to be made aware of a town meeting coming up, something like that, you can get a text or an email about it. Whenever that posted to the website. And there's, the full proposal for that is in the back of your Capital Improvement Plan document. And then equipment is, again, not a perfect match for that category, it's, it's really software that the clerks use for recording these meetings and it just, it needs to be updated for Windows ten and updated for greater functionality. So that's what we're proposing for that. Same information again, just represented in a different fashion, Parks and Recreation, obviously the big one with the shelter. Transportation, again, is the Mills River Valley Trail. Public Facilities is a town hall, excuse me. Investigation and Equipment Software and Community Development is the website. So in summary, as far as expenditures go, public engagement's a really big one. That's what we're hoping for with the, the new website, the new platforms. Transparency really goes back to public engagement and more accountability as well as the archive social for maintaining records. Service delivery, that's really getting at the Parks and Recreation programming position as well as greater efficiency and, and what we do in terms of staffing with the Adobe software, the new website platform. And then planning, I mentioned at the very beginning, the recommendation is to set aside one point two five cents for capital reserve funding for Parks and Recreation slash Greenways and a future version of this building. And, oh, the American Rescue Plan. Just real quickly, I'll, I'll touch on this, you want to ask your question first, Roger?
Can we go back to the planning and zoning?
We don't have planning and zoning in this, are you talking about planning on the spreadsheet I just, we're in the document itself.
The, the cost of the part-time employee.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Is that coming up or did I miss that?
No, I just didn't highlight it in here, but we can certainly talk about it.
So roughly, so we just hired a part-time planning and zoning person.
Right.
Okay, what is, what is, what is their salary roughly? Just make it easy.
Well, the, the part-time salary is sixteen thousand dollars, or excuse me, sixteen dollars an hour.
So that's, that's the person working now?
No, no, that, that's the part-time position, let me get you the exact figure.
Do you want to know the salary for the guy coming on board here?
The, the person, I think it started the other day, what is their salary?
It's mid-sixties.
Sixties? So so I thought it was a part-time person that we hired.
Well, so the, let me explain, the part-time position came out of a discussion we had a couple of months ago about enforcement of the noise ordinance. And that was a suggestion from council that we, we create a position to do that work. And so that's, that's the change you see in the salary item for planning is accounting for fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars of a part-time position. That would be sixteen dollars an hour. I forget the number of hours that equates to, but that's what that increases for, for the whole year, I mean. There you go. The zoning administration. Well, the intention that, the direction I got from previous meetings was look at a position that would be part-time to enforce the noise ordinance, keep an extra eye on the park in the evenings and ensure that all of the streetlights are functioning. And so that's what we've included in here is a new position, aside the, the existing position we were just hired was already budgeted for and that's been on, on the books for a while. But this new person was at the direction of, of this board to develop that cost. So that's what we've included.
So this, what we're calling a new person, this is actually a replacement for a position that was filled here until a year or two ago.
That's right.
Okay, so we're essentially replacing that person, right, exactly.
Yeah, the new.
Our new noise ordinance and be able to make sure they shut down at nine o'clock on the weekends.
Right.
So that is my question. So we used to have a full-time planner slash zoning administrator. Okay, so that's what you hired. So my question is this, why do we need another zoning administrator?
There was concern from council about the ability of someone to be able to work full-time but also be working in the evenings, well, I should say, that's my concern, that one person can't do all that work. The request for a new position actually came from, from this body, specifically in regards to the noise ordinance.
So my understanding, I'm getting old, my understanding is that we was gonna hire a full-time planner
Right.
and zoning administrator. And that's what you did.
That's right.
Thank you. Now, so why can't we flex this person's hours? So going back to my point is that, so we're gonna have two zoning administrators. One is here, sitting in his office. That goes out during the day and looks at my deck.
Right.
And then you're gonna have a part-time zoning administrator that works just nights. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that, exactly right.
Okay, why can't this full-time person do this?
There's not enough time.
That'd be more than full-time, that's, it's a job. So they'd be working extra, nobody's gonna work eighteen hours a day. Yeah, but then you'd be short somebody during the day because you've got to flex the time.
You've seen the mistakes I've made in the last year, I can't continue to do this work. I mean, that's, that's why we hired the full-time position.
Because what was the math we did for, like Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, making sure that the music was?
I think I was looking at eighteen hours a week was the original idea.
I think we talked about fewer than that originally and then the consensus, or at least what I remember, what I recollect is that we decided the low number of hours that you had proposed wasn't quite enough, so maybe we should bump it up to a little bit more. So I think we actually asked you for more hours per week at some point.
Right, you did, and I kept it under a thousand hours because if we go above that, we start paying benefits for that person.
And it's probably gonna depend on the time of year and the season, how popular certain things are at night versus, you know, warm weather versus cold weather. So it's probably gonna fluctuate.
So, so you specifically mentioned the noise ordinance. So we don't have to have a contract with the Sheriff's Department to enforce the noise ordinance.
That's, that was the point of developing the ordinance, yes.
Okay, I just see this, is that, I just see part-time rolling in, is that it's part-time today, it'll be full-time next week.
Okay, the American Rescue Plan. I hate to sound like a broken record here, but Sue and I have both attended a couple of different trainings on this and have learned essentially nothing more. They, they have provided, Council McCaskey mentioned the, the summary guidance and they've even published the interim final rule, rules, which is in fact interim. They're open on a sixty-day comment period right now. And they basically say the same thing. I've, I've not read a hundred and fifty pages. I'm just going to put that out there. But the summaries that we've read and the fact sheets all indicate that these are the four things that are allowable expenditures. So I don't think we need to do anything with this at this point. A lot of our peers across the state are, I'm guessing, going to sit on this until probably August or September when there's a little bit more clarification as to what this money can be used for. And then have maybe a mini visioning session or something like that to really figure out how this can be utilized. So next steps in the budget development. Finance Committee is scheduled to meet next week to review this. A public hearing tentatively set for June tenth, that's board's pleasure. And then June twenty-fourth adoption and the deadline to adopt it is July first. And that is all that I have as far as a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I got one more question.
Sure.
So, right now, this fiscal year that we're in, how much money will we have left over carrying in to the next year, roughly?
You know that number, Sue?
I, I, I don't know that number because we're still spending money. We're still getting revenues in that we don't know what those numbers are. So it's, it's, it, it's hard for me to say at this point.
The other thing is- Most recent unassigned fund balance, because she can, we have a recent, relatively recent number on that.
I'm just asking roughly.
Yeah.
Is that, it don't have to be precise. So do we have-
I cannot even guess at how much we will carry forward.
Do we have fifty cents or fifty million?
It will not be fifty million, but I, I honestly, I don't even have an estimate. I can tell you that your fund balance as of April thirtieth is four million nine eighty-six.
Okay, so as of April, right? We have roughly a million dollars in the fund balance that is not budgeted. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct.
So according to this fiscal year's budget that we're in, okay? Am I asking, does it make sense?
What, what, the calculation that you just tried to do, fund balance is outside of your budget money.
Okay.
About what our uncommitted fund balance was. You, you gave me a ballpark figure of three.
Yeah, that's a different number and
that's what you want to know, Roger?
I'm holding off on answering because the number's changed-
I understand.
Since you and I spoke.
As of April thirtieth, the uncommitted fund balance is two point eight million. Yes, that's uncommitted, but, but you had asked how much from this current budget was going in.
Let me turn your microphone on, Roger, please.
So two and a half million dollars in uncommitted money as of April that is not included in our current budget spending.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I project so theoretically, let's say two million. So theoretically, our projections of sales tax and other revenue coming in was a whole lot greater than what we anticipated this time last year.
That's right.
Okay, so I appreciate you putting the, the three quarters of a cent towards the new town hall. I really don't like having a big bank account.
Yeah.
So I would propose that we drop the tax rate by one cent going into the next fiscal year. And so that one cent generates roughly how much?
Hundred and thirty-four.
Hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, so let's say a hundred and fifty thousand, give or take. So dropping it one cent is not going to hurt us.
Keep in mind that the two point eight million a year of uncommitted fund balance cannot be appropriated to operate. It can only be appropriated for capital projects. So it's, it's not something you can take some of that money and put it in your budget.
We also established a fund balance policy, which I was going to ask you whether the, the current fund balance falls into that range that we set.
Yes.
So we're, we're comfortably within the range that we set for maintaining a fund balance and carrying that forward.
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I want to know. And the one thing that I would caution this body about dropping the tax rate, and I'm all for low taxes when we can do it. I know we dropped the tax rate a year or so ago and I was for it at the time. The legislature, in all their infinite wisdom, has decided that any, any municipality that decides to raise their taxes, they have to send it out for referendum, a townwide vote. In other words, I would be very, 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 very cautious about dropping taxes because you will never be able to raise them again if you need to.
Also, as you lower your tax rate, you get a smaller portion of sales tax.
I understand that. Now, is that I agree that if the town, actually, I'm going to take the other side respectfully, Brian, is that maybe we should have a referendum on raising the tax rate. Is that, I'm all for that. Is that it's the people's money, we need to spend it very conservatively. And for those that live inside the town, I think they'll agree. Is that we need to be conservative with our money. We don't need a big bankroll. The other question is that on our fund balance policy, didn't we, was that what you called it, Ron?
Yes, sir.
What percentage? Did, did we use a percentage, Sue?
Sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the budget, is that right? Yeah. Sixty-five to seventy-five percent of our overall budget.
With this roughly two and a half million dollars set aside for capital things, where are we at on that percentage wise as of April?
And, and I just explained that, that we're within our range.
I'm asking, are we at forty percent or eighty percent? That's what I'm asking.
I believe we're at-
We were, we're actually, well, you and I were making different calculations, so my numbers were all off.
I'm just trying to kind of get a handle on where, where we're at.
Yeah, sure.
We are, as of today, right about a hundred percent, but you take this measure at fiscal year end.
That the fund balance is measured at the hundred and thirtieth, is what she's saying.
Welcome, Roger. Thank you. I, I will agree with you. You, you said we need to spend conservatively. We do. We, we have to constantly be aware of the fact that we're, we're spending money that has been collected from hardworking taxpayers. But it is incumbent on us to spend it on services that, that people, the residents of the town can use and not to simply hoard it in the bank. And that's, that was my reason for suggesting the fund balance policy in the first place is to keep us within a certain range where we're not just simply sitting there hoarding taxpayers' money. I don't ever want to do that.
Any other budget questions? Thank you, Dana.
Do you want, is it the board's pleasure to set that public hearing for June tenth?
Do you need a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion and reset the budget hearing for June tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. All those in favor of the public hearing June tenth, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I may, Mayor, before we move on, so there was some discussion about the position and planning, programming. Is there anything that I need to modify in this budget that you want to see again, maybe at your next meeting before the hearing? Or do you want to just leave things as is and discuss it again at the hearing?
I'm in favor of leaving them as presented.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, moving on the agenda. Now we have the Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan update. You had to volunteer.
All right. So this evening on your agenda is the Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan. And before I start, I just want to acknowledge that Michael Malacheck, the Town's New Zoning Administrator, is on the call, as is Alan Steinbeck for any additional questions that I can't answer. So we're just going to talk briefly about the process, the goals of the plans, and then recommendations from the various boards and committees. So again, the, the purpose of this plan, sort of like why do we do this work? Is it's really, it's to serve as the guiding document for the town of Mills River, how it's going to develop, the vision for the future, the policy framework by which we'll make decisions. And then it also, while it's not a requirement yet, as of next year, in order to maintain a zoning ordinance, you have to have a comprehensive plan in place. So this checks that box off for us for the future. And of course, it anticipates any other future infrastructure, facilities, needs, public services that we may need to consider in the future as we continue to serve the citizens of Mills River. Go ahead, Brian. So this was developed through an extensive public engagement strategy, beginning in two thousand nineteen with the kickoff of the plan and surveys that were mailed out. There were five, approximately five hundred and seventy, I want to say, of those completed. And then in the year twenty twenty, we began sort of getting into the nuts and bolts of the land use assessment, existing land use conditions, existing utilities, deep slopes, all that kind of stuff that goes into developing a plan as well as a future land use map. There was extensive input by the steering committee as well as the various boards and committees of the town. The steering committee helped develop the original list of goals, the vision, the values and the mission for the plan. And then there was obviously a lot of emphasis placed on policy development because that's sort of what is a comprehensive plan. In the year twenty twenty, started off fairly normal, but then COVID nineteen became a thing. So we had to, to switch a little bit our outreach strategy. We ended up having a couple of remote sessions that were very well attended. We were pleasantly surprised with the turnout we got from that. Those were last fall. And then throughout the, from about September, October on, we were working intently with the steering committee and then ultimately town council to actually draft the document. And that was reviewed by the, again, by the steering committee, planning board and ultimately town council. And then over the last couple of months, we presented in a formal sense back out to the various boards. And then here we, this evening, we are here for council's review. So just a little bit of a refresher on, this is just from twenty twenty, near the end of twenty twenty. I didn't include anything prior to this. But these are the various meetings that this was discussed. We tried to make an effort to get it in front of every single board the town has because it's, you know, the more eyes that see it, the better, the more input we get, the better. So we did take it to the various boards and committees of the town. And that was in twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, we talked about it with this body in January, give sort of an overview mid-month. And then at the end of January, at the visioning session, we spent a couple hours reviewing the document itself as well as the land use plan. Then in February, we presented sort of like the, the initial final draft, final draft, if you will, to the planning board. And then that went through some review of all the steering committee throughout the month of February. And mid-month in February this year, we had a couple of other briefings with the public and that was representing out some information that we had garnered from the previous discussions and, and showing a list of goals and things of that nature. And then we waited till the end of February, actually waited till about mid-March to sort of close out the public comment period. And then there were, there were a few comments we needed to address. Most of it was grammar and spelling and stylistic improvements to the document itself. And then on, in May, April of this year, we presented it to the steering committee. And then this final draft went to the planning board in April of this year and you all are seeing it tonight for the first time officially. So just in general terms, public feedback, there was of course overwhelming support. This was across the board. Routine comment was maintaining the community character and the nature of Mills River, protecting the natural environment. Those are very strong sentiments in pretty much anything that we did, heard from the public. Strong support for managing growth, allowing a different mix of uses, desire for more businesses and employment. And then there were mixed feelings about the town center development as well as how to pay for things. And that was one of the questions we asked with people who were going to support a tax increase or a bond or something like that. Go ahead, Brian. So these are the goals from the plan prioritized by the public. And they are protect and enhance the rural and small-town character of Mills River, promote preservation of ag land and natural lands while respecting property rights, managing growth and investment in Mills River to promote land stewardship, community development and fiscal responsibility. Provided maintain exceptional public facilities and services, build infrastructure to support local needs and diverse economic development and encourage housing choices for persons with all. and encourage housing choices for persons of all ages and different income levels. As you read through the plan, you've already seen this, but just for the public's benefit, I think, this is how it's broken down. You have elements, which you kind of look at as chapters. And then within each of those, you have objectives, which are the stated outcomes for each element. And then the policies are just that, they're officially adopted policies of the town. And then strategies are ways that we can implement some of these things. For example, there's, one of the things that we we don't have a lot of right now is is user data within the park. So that's something that's called out in both the comprehensive plan as well as the recreation plan that we count the number of users that are using using facilities. And then we developed a series of maps, and these are referenced in the plan, and they will be attached to the physical final copy of the document. The document is designed to be printed in landscape fashion. These are going to be 11 by 17 pieces of paper that will fold out at the bottom of the plan. So they're incorporated by reference and will be included in the final printed document. This is a land use vision map that was developed over the course of several months and several iterations. The areas in the purple color have commercial crossroads with the intended uses there being sort of what you'd expect on the highway, gas stations, basic services, things of that nature. The community center, it's not a community center in the sense of like a, you know, a social gathering place, but more of that's where the the heart of Mills River would be in terms of retail opportunities, services, office space, any other service you might expect to find in the town, grocery stores, all that would be in those areas. And then mixed residential is just that. It's a mixing of different varieties of residential uses and densities. And then the green area is the lower density residential, rural residential, which is a large portion of town. And the other couple of key changes we made after the first couple of iterations were portions of the property between where we are now and north on Two Lady, up near Jeffress Road, was originally designated as this community center for commercial development. But the steering committee felt strongly and logically that we should not encourage commercial development in areas that are prone to flooding. And so we re-categorized those to the residential component. And and that's why you see some of the properties south of Schoolhouse Road as the lower density residential, because they're subject to flooding as well. And then the the blue category is the industrial employment centers, which is basically where we have some of our larger manufacturers and employment centers right now. And some of those properties you'll see are green because they are, they too are subject to flooding. So there's a series of maps. There's the land use vision map. We have this topography, steep slope maps. And these are not regulatory maps. These are reference maps for us to use and play for planning purposes in the future. So these, these don't carry the weight of law or regulation or anything of that nature. And then as far as a recommendation, steering committee met April 7 and recommended approval of the plan as it was presented to them. Planning board got the same thing. And the only difference between what the planning board saw and what we provided you this week were a couple of misspellings on the cover sheet. Otherwise, policies haven't changed in any way. And we're, we're seeking a public hearing on May 27, if that's council's pleasure, to get this adopted and make an official policy of the town of Mills River. And we didn't provide paper copies. But we're happy to print those out if you'd like to see them. And I too recommend approval of the plan as that's been presented. Alan, do you have anything you want to add?
Not in terms of presentation of substance. I think that was a great overview. I do appreciate working with the town.
We don't hear him for some reason.
Yeah. Can you hear me, Daniel?
Daniel, just quick question. So anything that's in this plan, and if we adopt this comprehensive comprehensive plan as it's written, say this council or future council wants to change anything in this comprehensive plan, that's available to them at that time, right?
Yep. This is, this is not a binding document. It's it's policy guidance for the town to reference when it's appropriate to reference it.
So if this, if this council's vision changes, or a future council's vision changes, this plan is not locking anyone into the future as far as the council goes, they can change.
That's right, at any time, right? Yeah. And and one point for clarification is part of the adoption of this, the policy document is the future vision of land use map. And if that's adopted as is, and someone requests a rezoning that is inconsistent with that map, which is something that we have to acknowledge for all rezonings, whether it's consistent or inconsistent, if the rezoning is approved and is inconsistent with the map, the map is by default updated to reflect the new zoning. So that's the only sort of tied back to any sort of regulation that would happen. But that's, that's done on a case-by-case basis.
And just to be clear, I want you to say that again. Let me make sure that I understand, anybody that's watching this later on, because it'll be archived, I'm sure, that if there is a conflict, confliction with the land use map, that it will be in attached to this comprehensive plan. That does not mean that that zoning cannot be changed by an action of council.
That is absolutely correct. Yeah. So let me just restate it for clarity. The the land use plan, the future land use map that's adopted with this document, whenever this document is adopted, is a guideline for development. And let's say I come in and in six months from now, and I want to rezone my property on somewhere south on Two Lady. And I want to put in a big commercial project, even though the future land use map recommends that presidentially, if I need to rezone it to something else, the council is free to ignore what's in its own plan. You merely have to state in the minutes that you acknowledge the fact that it's inconsistent, and we're going to approve it for these reasons. You're welcome.
I have a clarification. So I know we went, this went before the planning board. And the planning board approved it. I know there was some discussion with the agriculture committee. What was there? Are they generally in support of it?
Well, that's a good question. We didn't, we didn't officially have that discussion. I know that the chairman, chairman was on the steering committee. And I I think they did. I I would be comfortable saying that there was general support for it, mostly because there was a lot of emphasis in the plan for protecting agricultural land. But I'm not going to speak for the committee, but that was just the feedback I got.
Sure. But the chairman of the agriculture committee was on the steering committee who created the comprehensive plan.
That's right.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
So so let's take a parcel on Two Lady. So according to this plan, it says it's residential. So if the property owner says, I want to put a commercial building. And so he comes back and says, oh, I didn't know that y'all had done this. Is there a mechanism to where my first question is that if we rezone it, then we're going to have to charge him for it?
If 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 he submitted an application, yes, there's a review fee for that.
Okay, so is there a mechanism to where if the five of us rezone his particular piece of property without him knowing it, and then he wants to do something next week, then he's got to pay money to come in and go through the whole rezoning process.
Right.
Although this is just a plan.
Right.
It's not set in concrete.
Right.
So in some ways, it's not set in concrete.
Right.
But in some ways, it is. Well, based on the example that I gave you.
Well, let me, let me expand on that example. If someone has a piece of property, let's say today in 2021, it's on Mills River Mixed Use. And they can do just about anything they want to do with that property at this point. If this plan is adopted, and that land use map calls out that property as future use for residential, that does not impact his zoning, his ability to do anything with that property today. It would only impact the property if he came in and submitted an application for a request for rezoning. We would open up the plan and say, you're requesting to go from mixed use to a residential. Well, hey, that's supported by the plan, and that's what the record would reflect. If it's not supported by the plan, it doesn't prevent him from being able to zoning. You simply put on the record that it's inconsistent with the plan, and then we update the map accordingly.
Say that again, Ben.
It's the, which part, the whole thing?
The part that that it does not stop him from rezoning that piece of property.
That's right. So let's, using current zoning districts, if if I have a property on Two Lady, that's Mr. M U. And I want to use it for a commercial purpose. Today, they can do that, because it's it's mixed use. If this plan's adopted as it's been written and as the map's been drawn, and he comes to the town and wants to rezone that to a commercial zoning district, then he would make application to make that and pay the fee. And council could make a decision accordingly. And you do by law have to reference the plan. You simply have to say, like, if there's an actual statement that would be drafted to set this plan as consistent or inconsistent with with this request, rather, is consistent with the plan. And if it's not, that doesn't prevent council from approving or denying it, just an acknowledgement. But this future land use map doesn't affect anyone's land.
Doesn't change anyone's zone.
That's right.
We're not changing any zone.
That's right.
We're not changing anyone's zoning. And then some, I'm still going to ask.
Yes, this does not change anyone's zoning, or their existing entitlements, or any existing permits, or any proposed permits that are in the hopper right now.
I'm fine with it. I think everybody's done a really good job, and it's based upon public or public input, and I think it's well put together. And the thing about it is that it is flexible, and it allows us to change it as we need to and as the town grows. So I'm comfortable with setting a public hearing.
I would be remiss if I did not thank everyone involved. So Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem Casky, thank you for all your time. The planning board was very actively engaged in this whole process, as was the steering committee, as were several members of the public and and the rest of staff. So this was, I'm I'm the one talking to you this evening, but Alan on the phone has been, you know, involved a lot. So there's been a lot of people that have helped put this together. And and that was, that was intentional. We wanted to get as many people as we could involved in the process.
I'd also like to thank Councilman Kimball and Councilman Austin, because they were also part of the process. Yeah, they were on the committee for a short time before election to council. So they were part of that process and part of the final product. So thank you, fellas.
Thank you, Brian Campbell, for running the slide show.
We'll give you credit for that.
Is there a motion to set the public hearing date?
So I make a motion that we set the public hearing date for May 27, 2021.
We actually already did that.
Did we? No, we broke it out. Yeah. We moved it to E. I'll say.
All those in favor of setting a public hearing for the Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan to Thursday, May 27? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
Alan, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
I'm all scribbled over here. All right. Sue, do you have any updates for us?
No. No further report. Thank you. No, I just don't have anything, right?
Arlie, thank you for being patient. Do you have anything?
Just to quickly go over the the report for April, we've collected $2,540,177.39, which is 98.7% still ahead of last year.
Thanks, Arlie. And Daniel, what else do you have for us?
I don't have anything additional for you. I do want to try to introduce Mike Malachek, if he can speak. I'm not sure what was happening.
It's just a letter on the screen.
Yeah, it's a good-looking letter. Alan, if you're there, can you try speaking, please?
Can you hear me, Alan?
Yeah.
When does he actually coming in person? Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Hang on.
Alan, I can hear you fine. I've heard you the whole time.
Yeah. Mike, I'm trying to get you on speaker. Hang on. That's the problem.
Maybe you messed it up, what you do over there.
Mike, could you hear me when I was responding, trying to respond to Daniel during his presentation?
Yeah, I I could hear you every time you spoke.
Oh, okay.
Because that's it's just on the, on their end.
Yeah. Now I can't hear Daniel or anyone.
I can't hear Daniel out in Nooka Nooka Land here either. Hard to sit here until 9:30 and doing it. So I just wanted to respond to that. I was hoping Jeff would hang around to to talk about it, but he didn't do it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Andy. Roger, anything? Brian Casky?
Just real quick, I know we we pushed back the public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. I I would like to encourage council members to go ahead and advance that and get that plan passed as well, because there are some deadlines for federal money. Those typically happen in the summertime. And having a plan in place is very much preferable than to not having a plan in place. So it it's not a promise. It's not something that we are bound to to provide. Matter of fact, we could never ever put anything that's on that piece of paper into place or pay for any of it. But having that plan in place gets us in a position where we can start collecting federal money in terms of grants. So that's my interest in pushing forward and and making sure that we get a plan of some sort passed. So I would, I would love to see us go ahead and move forward with this on the 27th, like we had planned to do. If there is some it's some appetite for doing that. Like I said, having a plan done and in place does not mean that it can't change later on, doesn't mean you're bound to it. It simply means you have a parks plan. It simply means you have a parks plan. And right now, we really don't. So that's my, that's my comment. If, if there's anyone else who would support moving ahead with this, I would love to do that. I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Master Plan for the 27th of May, 2021.
I'll second. All those in favor of setting the public hearing date for the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Master Plan for May 27th, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll second. And all those in favor? Aye.